Comprehensive Plan. As a public hearing, there are no motions being made and no actions by the Board being taken. We're here to take your input, record it, and decide what's appropriate and what we need to do for next steps. Consideration of feedback from you, the public, will be addressed at a planned commission meeting in the future, prior to adoption by the Town Board. All right? We are expecting or hoping that we will adopt the plan at our November Board meeting, but that is not cast in concrete. We welcome comments, but please avoid repetition. We will not place a time limit on this. Given that there are 10 speakers, I'd ask you to be reasonable in your time. Please step to the podium, introduce yourself and your place of residence. And as a reminder to everyone, this hearing is on our comprehensive plan, not a hearing on the Quarry RV Project. All the comments we have received so far, and I'll tell you 50, 75 comments, I've only had two comments from someone on any other portion of the plan. We reviewed the initial draft, made changes, deleted items that were not correctly stated, clear, or relevant to our town. For example, we removed references to zoning. The town does not do zoning, therefore it was inappropriate and irrelevant. Lastly, in the event that you did not see or hear, there were some changes made to an earlier draft of the plan, specifically Page 30, the statement on the redevelopment of quarries. The verbiage was changed to reflect active quarries, of which we have four active quarries in our town. The George Penny Latham Quarry is not an active quarry, and therefore has no reclamation or development plan. Okay? So with that, whoever would like to speak, please step to the podium and we'll get going. Thank you.
Or do I have to speak loud? Hope everyone can hear me. Good evening. My name's Dan Mathine. I'm a full-time voting resident, 6157 Gordon Road. If you go down Gordon Road West and you see NBB, that's where I live, and I always wanted to put up a little sign that said, "The end is near." But I'm a board member of Bay Shore Property Owners Association. The Board has listened to the concerns of our 367-member families. My comments this evening represent one of their concerns and wishes. As you well know, and as the President just said, there have been numerous concerns voiced about the comprehensive plan update, specifically the insertion of the following objective under Goals for Economic Development Strategy. If I may quote, "Support the eventual reclamation and redevelopment of local active quarries for residential and recreational uses." On behalf of BSPOA, I request that the Town of Sebastopol comprehensive plan needs to be explicit. It should leave no room for confusion or doubt that the Latham Smith Quarry above George K. Penny Park is not an active quarry, thus not included in Bullet Point 5 on Page 30. We ask that an exemption to the Latham Smith Quarry be added to Page 30. We also request that a specific listing of the names and locations of the four active quarries be included within the comprehensive plan. In addition, the Latham and Smith Quarry was established in 1893. We desire the inclusion of language to make the Latham and Smith Quarry a site of historical interest. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Sherri Muechler, 6451 Whitefish Bay Road. My husband Keith and I have lived in Door County since about 2006, and so we're short-term residents, so to speak. Over the past few months, I've reviewed the Sebastopol 20-year comprehensive plan from 2008, and I viewed the three videos that you have online about those plans at doorbell.net, I think it is. And I've reviewed your draft from the 24th, and I reviewed your new draft that you've come up with, and I've also looked at the Door County Comprehensive and Farmland Preservation Plan. And so I've done my homework, and I'm late to the game, I will admit, that I was not here during the preliminary planning for either the original 2008 plan or this one, because in 2008, we really weren't here yet. And for this one, I wasn't an interested party, unfortunately. But now I am. And so here's my primary and only concern. I've read both of the plans. I think both of them have the best interests of Sebastopol residents at heart. There's a lot of good things in there that you've done to keep the health and safety and future of Sebastopol in mind. One of my concerns is that I found, as I was exploring all of this information, some discrepancies between your future land use plans and the future land use plans of the Door County Comprehensive Plan. When I looked at your, on September 24th, you had some maps in the back of the room. And I was very surprised to see that on your maps, you had the Latham Smith Quarry colored as green. And that meant that it was a, what is it, not residential, recreational park designated area. But prior to coming that day and looking at that map, I had also looked at the Door County Comprehensive Plan and Farmland Preservation Map, and on that map, it's colored red. I am the Volume 1, and the red meaning that it's designated as commercial. And then on Volume 2, it shows the land use of the Latham Smith Quarry as open space and fallow fields. So there are two different maps at the Door County level than there are at the Sebastopol level. So I guess my input today would be that the maps of Sebastopol and Door County should both show green for parks and recreation, since I believe that that was the intent of the 2008 plan, and I do believe that that was your intent as a planning commission with this most current plan. And that the town and the county should review those, the Sebastopol plans, to determine if there's other discrepancies that exist between the Town Plan and the Door County Plans. There may also be other areas in Sebastopol that are designated differently than the Town Plan is. So right now, this is a critical piece of property due to the proposed project we've all talked about. It's kind of the elephant in the middle of the room, so to speak. And the differences in the land use maps, they could have a significant impact on future variances in land use decisions that are made in this town. So I think it's important that Sebastopol and Door County figure out why there are differences in the two maps. Thank you.
Live at 4857 Bay Shore Drive. My wife Sherri is a fourth-generation resident of the area. I was introduced to the Sebastopol area 45 years ago when we came on our honeymoon. And I love the place. I think it's a great area. I appreciate the work done by the Commission. I know this is a tough project that you're working on, and I frankly don't envy you. I did a fair amount of this in business, and I know you get a lot of input and pressure and a lot of things to juggle and put together, so I appreciate it. Almost every day, I walk to the quarry, the boat launch, and invariably, I'll start talking to people that visit there, tourists and residents. And there was a gentleman a few weeks ago, maybe about a month, that I saw, and he wanted to really relate to me, I was just chatting with him, of what we had here. He said, he takes his family a couple of times a year and drives down Bay Shore Drive, and he said, "That's absolutely beautiful road, that you'd be able to see Sturgeon Bay with it." And he said, "We always stop at the boat launch," and he said, "Look out, there you have Sturgeon Bay," and the kids could see, you know, anything from a freighter to the Coast Guard Cutter going by, fishermen, kayakers. And then he said, "You have the beauty of Potawatomi Park across the way, the lighthouse, sort of, you know, is a highlight of that area." And then he pointed to Green Bay and the expanse of Green Bay going out to the horizon. Then he turned around and he said, "You realize that that's the Niagara Escarpment, we're at the southern end of that." And he was almost like a tour guide. And thinking about that encounter with him and reading, I read through the plan twice, and I think you did a terrific job with the objectives that you have in it, the economic objectives, the ecology and the environment, doing that water quality and tourism. And, but as I was reading it and I'm going through it, there's a lot of verbiage that says enhance, encourage, preserve, support, promote. These are all good words, but there's more of that than actual action items that one would look for in a plan, that said, "Here's what we're going to do to support the objectives, and here's, you know, how we're going to do it." And I didn't see a lot of that. Then recalling the comments from this gentleman, what I would propose, because I oftentimes see when I'm walking there, there was an Asian family. I would say there's three generations of this family, older gentleman that needed help and his family, and they're having their picture taken by the plaque that talks about the Latham Smith Quarry. And you have the, you know, the boat structure there. And people stop there, have their pictures taken, they read that. Why not use that display and then expand it with other displays that can talk about the ecology of the area? I would think it would be a great display to talk about the Niagara Escarpment, the usefulness that we can use with the information. There was a professor from the University of Wisconsin that noted there was 192 rare species that are supported by the escarpment. And we have with the quarry, it's almost like an envelope opening up, that you could see, you know, the layers of rock, and I could visualize that you could have some sort of a structure that talks about what happened in the different millennia. And we could do that, and then have another display that talks about water quality, the efforts that we're making to control water runoff, how we treat sewage, and that sort of thing for protection of the water. The economy in the local area is important. Why not tell tourists that, you know, "Here are orchards and farmers that are selling their products, and here's where you can meet it, and what's important to Sebastopol is this farming community." But I can go on, but I don't want to use a lot of time, but there's plenty of space in that Penny Park to put a series of these displays. I like, you know, some of these, you know, warm wishes, verbiage of encouraging preserving, but I would really like to see some specific action elements. I like the idea of putting in displays. I would also ask, as a corollary to this, that we designate Bay Shore Drive as a heritage road. It starts out with a bay shipbuilding. People take that and they go 35 miles an hour and see the beauty of Sturgeon Bay. It's the longest stretch of road along Sturgeon Bay, and then it culminates at what I consider is the gem of the township and the county, to have this whole panoramic area, and that that should be designated as a historic area. But with all of that, again, I appreciate your work. We have a good area, and I hope we preserve it and then use it, you know, for the eco-tourism that you note on Page 21 of your comprehensive plan. Thank you for your time.
Hopefully you can hear me there. I'm Jim Mitche. I live at, full-time at 4159 Bay Shore Drive, here in Sebastopol. I'm, like Dan, also Dan Mathine. I'm on the Bay Shore Property Owners Association Board, and in fact, I am the chairman of the Special Committee on Quarry Development. I just wanted to reinforce and provide a little background information on our suggestion that the Latham and Smith Quarry be made a historic resource. There's a long history of the quarry. There's books about it, papers, scholarly papers, newspaper articles, many of which we're trying to collect and put on the website for your perusal. But I put together just a two-page summary and a very good article from the Peninsula Pulse from 2006, just to give some highlight. Yes, it's certainly a main feature on the Niagara Escarpment that really starts at Horican Marsh and goes like an arc to central New York. Very ancient geological formation that left a lot of very high-quality stone that in the 1830s was started before Wisconsin was a state. And for about 60 years, it was quarried by hand with crowbars and guys carrying one-person stones, 100-pound stones, heavier stones than I move around. Latham and Smith were shipbuilders that sought opportunity in 1893, as Dan said, developed the quarry. And at the beginning of the 20th century, the biggest export from Door County was in fact stone. And there is hardly a place on Lake Michigan that's not partially made with Latham's or quarry material from this area. Changes in markets and changes in ownership led to its closure in 1944, but certainly it's been a very important economic, technical, and settlement. There were thousands of people working at the quarry at its peak, part of Door County and Sebastopol in particular. So I'm just going to provide this summary information. If I can just hand it here. I didn't make enough for all of this crowd, but it is, Jane, it's on the website about the RV development, as I understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name's Bill Harder. I'm going to speak to you tonight from several different perspectives. One's an old friend of George Penny, who told me one night that he echoed the proposal thought, or at least the concept thought, that the quarry and the entire Bay Shore Drive should be designated as a historic site and developed further as an extension from the park. Another perspective, as a longtime resident of Harder Hill Road, just above the big quarry, we've seen the use of that quarry go unused for decades, and it could be a punctuation for Door County of the end of Niagara Escarpment, used as an educational opportunity, not only for the visitors, but definitely for the schoolkids in the area. It's a very unique geological structure from this side of the western edge of it to the other side, which is effectively Niagara Falls. So that could be quite the remarks provided to kids and visitors, adults alike coming to the area. While I did provide some written information, I also wanted to echo the thoughts of our Board. I'm also president of the Board of Directors from the Maritime Museum, who wanted to convey to you tonight the idea and the concept that this is definitely a historic site out in that area. The entire Latham Smith Quarry that is above officially where George Penny Park currently is, is very much of a historic site that all the members of the Board wish to see preserved and incorporated into the comprehensive plan for the Town of Sebastopol and eventually zoned by Door County. So while I did provide some written points, I just wanted to emphasize four of them tonight on Page 15 of your comprehensive plan. The map shows the Penny Old Stone Quarry Park. We'd recommend that be designated as a historic site. It definitely is historic regardless of the current ownership, but as the previous speaker just mentioned, it goes back over a century. And we should not forget how we were made in this area, what brought success to the area. And in talking with the grandson, Latham Stern, everybody knows, is a different name, but Latham told me that he's definitely interested in supporting anything that could possibly expand the historic nature of the site that his grandfather worked so hard on, and eventually where the stone was used, carried by the ships built in Sturgeon Bay to the breakwaters across the Great Lakes. So this could be a definite asset, not only to the Town of Sebastopol, but to Door County overall, a very much of a stopoff for people on an educational adult tour principally for the geological formations that are there. On Page 16, the land use strategy, I'd recommend considering an objective of preserve and encourage the educational opportunities of the natural and historic sites. This fits Door County's modes and motifs. Doing anything less to this area would be an injustice to our forefathers and the people that worked so hard in the area that brought economic success and an opportunity for people to have a good life back in those times. On Page 22, I'd recommend in the map of future land use designation as the Penny Old Stone Quarry Park, especially the entire quarry, which is formerly known as the Latham Smith Quarry. It's correctly for the park recreation. Please consider this designation on that page. Also on Page 24, I'd ask you to consider recognizing the opportunities for 501(c)(3) groups to participate in the planning process. There's numerous folks in the 501(c)(3)'s, not only the one that I represent here this evening, but others in the Niagara Escarpment effort. This is a gem, really, pardon pun, but it's a gem that we have, and we shouldn't trifle with the value of this particular park. So please consider the educational and historic guidance and coaching counseling that could be provided by nonprofit organizations to help support the objectives and goals in the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
I am Jill Gershon, and I live at 4755 Bay Shore Drive. This is just sort of a, nothing very detailed, but more of a, maybe more of an emotional plea. As property owners, we purchased our property in 2010, and we were initially interested in purchasing property in the Ephraim area. However, when we discovered the area around Bay Shore Drive, we were immediately, we immediately appreciated the tranquility of the forested drive, the recreational offerings, including biking and hiking along the drive, and the residential nature and low-population density of the area. Based on these factors, we chose to purchase the property on Bay Shore Drive. We believe that there are better options for the development of the land at the quarry. We also believe that this land could be developed as an extension of Penny Park. And this might be naive, but we also believe that through donations, philanthropic commitment by the community, associations, the Land Trust, Door County, and the townships, that this land could be purchased and developed to serve as a natural area that's accessible to all. Development of this site in such a way would set a precedent to maintain the natural beauty of Door County, and we are fearful that overdevelopment in lieu of protecting the environment and maintaining a desirable destination for those that value the inherent beauty of the Door Peninsula, we also believe this is a gem. And once these gems are developed, they're gone forever. And I've never been in this room before, but I do appreciate the beautiful artwork that's in this room, and I think this artwork reflects the values of all of us who live here or who own property here. And I just don't doubt that these are the values that everybody in this room has. Thank you.
My name is Carol Kenezki, and my husband Steve and I have a home at 5297 Bay Shore Drive. Due to work obligations, we are not privileged to be able to live in Sebastopol full-time, but we get here just about every opportunity we can to enjoy the incredibly beautiful and peaceful community that residents of Sebastopol enjoy year-round. As land and homeowners here since early 2006, we pay the same property taxes as full-time residents, and we are active contributing members of Bay Shore Property Owners Association, Door County Land Trust, and Friends of Peninsula State Park. We have found that Sebastopol and truly all of Door County is truly a special place to live, mainly due to its devotion to preserving and protecting the rural farming areas and orchards, open spaces, and stunning views and scenery. I have a background in commercial real estate and banking, and have been following the development of the 20-year comprehensive plan. It is very well-written and certainly lays out a detailed plan of growth and vision for all residents of Sebastopol for the years to come. Of particular interest to me and to many people that live on Bay Shore Drive is the fact that Sebastopol is the gateway for many silent sports in Door County, and it's integral to organize events such as, which you all know about, the Door County Century Ride, the Door County Triathlon, the Fall 50, and the Door County Half Marathon. In addition, many parts of Sebastopol, and especially Bay Shore Drive, are full of runners, joggers, walkers, and people on bikes of all ages, families with children, walkers with pets, and any proposed development that would make it more difficult for everyone living in the area to take advantage of these activities should be very carefully studied and considered. Please consider a provision in the comprehensive plan to continue to support these activities for the entire community, both in an organized and on an individual basis, and place emphasis in the plan on limiting any development that would encroach on the enjoyment of these activities by the residents of Sebastopol and their guests. As homeowners, we all share the concerns about preserving and maintaining the wondrous environment we live in, and so please give careful consideration to the planning that you are undertaking. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening.
My wife and I own Door 44 on 5466 County Road P. And we originally started in 2011. And we originally started in 2013 right next to Grandma Tommy's and have purchased basically a 20-acre parcel on the intersection there and developed our winery. So I'm the guy that's not talking about the quarry tonight. I just want to emphasize the points I previously submitted to the Planning Commission to highlight the importance, I think, it has to me personally, but to this area too, and it sort of echoes a lot of the comments made tonight. Actually, the cover of the plan actually shows a picture of our vineyard, and a recurring theme in the plan is the acknowledgement of agritourism as a way for this township to really develop its tax base and not lose the character of this place. And our vision for our vineyard and winery is exactly to do that. 95% of it is green space. We're going to expand that vineyard, and it's been a passion of ours to give people a regional identity of what it means to actually grow and make wine in an officially designated wine region now. The Niagara Escarpment was mentioned several times tonight. The official wine designation for this region is called the Wisconsin Ledge. We take great pride in that the majority of our wine is grown here on the Wisconsin Ledge. So it is a way, I think, for the economy of this area to really develop and still maintain the character of this place. Just a few facts to highlight that. A 2015 study said over $152 million was spent in the state of Wisconsin related to wine revisits. And secondly, it's responsible for about 1,350 jobs. That's four years ago. That's only increased since then. So, you know, the agritourism is a huge component, and I just want to emphasize the importance of this being reflected in the plan for future decisions that have to be made at the town or county level. You know, the, I don't know if the end result is doing a mixed-use designation on the map or creating an agritourism designation on the land use plan, but I think it's important to actually acknowledge what agritourism means and what it is necessary for a business. So, in fact, under the, I think it's page 20, under the business portion for future land use designations, it actually shows our winery. So some things that are important for agritourism are for people to get that experiential offering. We realize this at our previous, our current location in Kewanee County is that people want an experience more than they want just a bottle of wine. So it's important for us to make offerings to people, such as a wine maker dinner out in the vineyard, or to be able to serve small plates using ingredients that are grown here locally. So those things are really important to us as a winery, as a business, trying to emphasize agritourism. So I just want to indicate that it is important for these interests for a business doing agritourism that it gets acknowledged when there's future decisions, whether they may be made towards zoning or variance allowances in the future. So that would be it. Thank you very much.
Well, I don't have a joke to open with like Dan, other than I feel like I'm back at the bank where I used to work for many years, except this is too high and I'm not going to be giving you money. So, I'm Brenda Lang, voting resident for the last 24 years. My husband and I live full-time on Whitefish Bay Road. I have thoroughly read the comprehensive plan update draft. There are many references in the draft to keeping the town rural residential, preserving the town scenery, and maintaining the town's natural landscape. Like the authors of the plan, I also believe we need to preserve the scenery and maintain the natural landscape. However, after comparing the draft from the 924 Open House and the 10-9 version supplied by Town Chairman Mr. Wolfle, I noticed two recent deletions. Page nine has eliminated direct residential development to areas where soils can better support foundations and septic systems. Page 20, under future land use designations in the transportation section, has eliminated "Well-connected patterns will also allow people to safely and efficiently navigate the town's streets and roads with and without personal vehicles. Developments should encourage more active transportation, walking and biking in their designs." Is it possible to get clarification on who made these deletions and why they were made? Under the area listed as "Land Legacy Locations," the plan states the Niagara Escarpment runs along the western edge of Door County, right through Sebastopol. The Niagara Escarpment has high potential for recreation and education. The plan also states we should continue to preserve and protect the Niagara Escarpment. I suggest that the open space, beautiful scenery, and panoramic view of the Latham &amp; Smith Quarry be protected, and in keeping with the rest of the plan update, be considered as a site of geological interest. I appreciate all the work that has gone into the plan update, and I appreciate all the work and time that our elected officials put forth for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Glenn Guskowski, 4851 Bay Shore Drive. My wife and I and family have owned that property for 20 years. We have lived there both full-time and part-time. And we've heard a lot of comments already this evening about the plan. I've sent my comments to the board in a letter, both regarding the quarry proposition and also the 20-year plan. I just want to add in and echo some of the comments that Dan Mavis made earlier regarding Highway B. According to the 20-year plan, Highway B is designated as a major collector. Not sure exactly what that means. I had a brief conversation with Supervisor Mellon earlier about this, but it would appear that this designation and the use, or the objective for this highway is at odds with the way this highway is actually used. You've heard many comments about the bicyclists, the walkers, the dog walkers. Bike route signs have been posted on that road, even though it hasn't been widened for the use of bicycles. But it seems like we're trying to squeeze an awful lot out of Highway B. And I would echo the comments that Dan made, that Highway B is a very special piece of roadway. And I would recommend that the town consider alternate routes as a major collector. Highway H is listed as a minor collector, yet along Highway H, there is a large mixed-use zoning development, or area that is zone mixed-use. This would seem more in keeping with major collection of traffic and other type of vehicle use rather than Highway B. And simply put, I believe that there's a conflict with that designation, and I would recommend that that designation gets changed, and the board seriously consider designating Highway B, or the county designating Highway D as a scenic route. Thank you for hearing the comments.
Hello. My name is John Kreisant. My wife Renee and I live at 4764 Bay Shore Drive. We bought a house here about 20 years ago. It's probably one of the oldest homes on Bay Shore Drive, and it was in fact built from stone from the Latham &amp; Smith Quarry. My wife and I, we only started living here full-time about three years ago. Our work caused us to travel across the country year-round, and we would constantly ask ourselves, is there someplace else we'd rather live and settle and retire than Door County? And we couldn't come up with anything, even though we covered the country from coast to coast, from north to south. And I would just hate to see anything happen with development that would destroy the peace and tranquility that is currently Bay Shore Drive. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Severson-Lavoy, and I am fourth-generation Door County resident. My husband and I came back after being absent for 40 years. And I've seen a great deal of changes in the county since I grew up as a child, and even my grandfather had a cherry orchard, which is now surrounded by subdivisions. I live right near the quarry, and every day I walk, and I see traffic, I see children, I see pets. It's just such a special place, and I would just hate to have it developed. I have to echo what everybody else has been saying. It's really a unique and special place, and that's why we chose to move back to Door County, because we are unique and we are special. And I think we should really think about what's best for future generations. Thank you.
I didn't intend to stand up, but I've said this to my friends, so I might as well say it here. I live at 4766 Bluff Drive, which used to be Old OR when I purchased the property. It's a stone building that was built out of the stone from the quarry as well, and it's very quiet, and that's why we live there. And I was astounded when they built the boat ramp down there, the quarry boat ramp. I don't know what it's specifically called, but you know what I'm talking about, that great big space where people put their boats in the water. That's great. No playground, nothing for children to do down there. It's all for adults, and adults with big boats and big trucks. And, I mean, if we're going to do something with the quarry, I would like it to be a place where children would be welcome and encouraged, a place where they could actually see a garden growing and see a place for them to run around without having to run into a road. And it would just be lovely to have music, maybe, you know, something artistic. Door County is known for its artistic flavor. Couldn't we get some artistic flavor in that area? We have all the boats and the motors and the fishermen, and that's all great, but could we also have some dance and music and art and places for our children and the generations coming? And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else wishing to speak? They always do this three times, you know. Anyone else wishing to speak? I've always wanted to do this. Okay, last chance. Anyone else wishing to speak before I do? Get a chance. Okay, first off, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate your input. I have to tell you that frankly, I would love to have had your input at any one of the many meetings that we have before this to share your input and thoughts. It helps us develop and reach a common goal. So please keep that in mind when you see us send things out, saying that we're going to have a meeting on this subject or that subject, and we'd like your input, because that's really the great time to come and give it to us as we're in the working stages. Also, we're always looking for what? Committee members. So if you're interested and you want to be heard, we have various committees, and we're always pressed to find someone who will step up and say, hey, I'd be happy to join in, lend an ear, give my comments. Dan, it's that hatred for a letter word, volunteering. That's what we're looking for, volunteers. I want to just make those two comments. Now, what we will do is we will take the input that we've gathered from you tonight. It will go to the Plant Commission, and they'll digest it and decide what things are appropriate to add, detract, modify, or adjust the plan. And eventually, it'll work its way back to the Town Board, where we'll take their input and we'll decide if we're going to approve it or we require additional changes. I think I laid out earlier what the timeline was for that. I also want to just address an error, I think. I shouldn't say an error, but maybe a misunderstanding. George Penny Park is a county park. Bay Shore Drive is a county road. We are underneath county zoning. I'm not hiding behind the fact, but if you want some of the things that you'd like to have happen, like historical designations, you have to start with the county, or at least work with the county, because they own these roads. If you want a rural road designation on Bay Shore Drive, we have some of these in the community here. That's a county road. It's got to go to work. You've got to go to work on them. We would certainly support those efforts, all right? But those things belong to the county, not the town. We do not do zoning at the town level. I mentioned that earlier. You know, we very seldom, I shouldn't say that, we do deal with conditional uses, which this project at some point in time will come to the town if they ever file an application. To date, nothing. So to date, it's a fantasy until this thing develops. That's our opportunity to input. We do not do the zoning. We don't make zoning changes. That's all done by the county. We are under county zoning. So we are restricted to some degree with some of the things. So when you talk about things like, and I only say this because I don't want you to think this information's fallen on deaf and ears, but when you say, you know, redesignate a highway, well, HH is a county highway. So we have to work within the guidelines as you go through the community. So if there are some things that we don't do, I want you to understand a little bit of the background. There are some things we can do, or if there's some things we can support, goals that you'd like to see us achieve, and we do that in concert with the county, I'm all for that. But you need to understand those roles and what things we can and can't do. So I thank you again for coming this evening. We'll post this document as changes are made on our website, so you can review it, and you are certainly welcome to address any of the Plant Commission members which are here tonight, or any of the board members. And we welcome you to our annual Christmas party, if you so choose to come, on December 6. We had a nice turnout last year, and would encourage you to come and socialize and get to know your Town Board and people in the community even better. So unless there's any other comments, thank you again for coming, and good evenings.